Brian Plotz, that's our attorney.
Good evening, everyone. I will call to order this regularly scheduled Blue Lake City Council meeting on a different night, Tuesday, December nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would you establish a quorum of the council, please?
Mayor Jones.
Here.
Mayor Protem Shol.
Present.
Councilmember McKay.
Present.
Councilmember Edgar.
Aye.
Councilmember Schifani.
Here.
Hey, we're all here this evening. Item two is approval of the agenda. We'll start with council. Is there anyone on the council that would like to move or change anything from the agenda this evening?
Nope.
Good.
Any staff changes needed?
Okay.
Anyone from the public? Mr. Sawatsky?
I'm not going to ask that it be changed this time, but in the future, when you have closed session items, it's normal practice to have those, either you have them for the first thirty minutes of your meeting, and then the meeting starts at six-thirty. And in this case, since you're trying to accommodate your attorney, you would normally have your items following. Either that, or you would have it at the end of your meeting, instead of the middle of the meeting where we are asked to leave the room and go sit outside in the wet and cold. I think in the future, you may wish to go ahead and schedule those things accordingly. That accomplishes your goal with a time set for your attorney, so your attorney's not billable hours. And it also enables the public to not have a broken up meeting. It's common for the supervisors to do that, but they have a two-hour break over their lunch hour, closed session. Then sometimes, that would just be a consideration that would be appreciated when you schedule your agendas regarding future meetings. Thank you. My opportunity to speak.
Thank you. And Julie?
I would like to concur what Kent said. I think it's important that our closed sessions are mitigated in a way that the public is not asked to be excused during session. And I think we should always give courtesy to anyone in-house on the agenda that's there to speak on their behalf, or on Zoom, that we should always prioritize them towards the beginning. But I have no adjustments to the agenda if our council feels content. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on the agenda? Yes, Darcy?
On the agenda?
Yeah, we're on item two, approval of the agenda. Are you here for public comment?
Yeah.
Okay, well, let's just wait, wait a few minutes. Okay.
I'll move to approve the agenda as it is.
Can I do that?
All right, motion by Elizabeth McKay, seconded by Angela Shaw, to approve the agenda as delivered. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I have half a rock paper scissors.
Okay, next one.
All right.
All right, we are now on item three. Public comment. The public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information to the city council that is relevant to the scope of authority of the city of Blue Lake that is not on the agenda. The council may provide up to fifteen minutes for this public input session. To assure that each individual presentation is heard, the council may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time the council takes up each specific agenda item. Is there anyone here for public comment? Darcy, and then Kent. I don't see anyone on Zoom at the moment.
Okay.
All right, Darcy, we would ask that you be microphone, please.
Keep an eye on the fifteen minutes.
And the three minutes.
Hi, good evening. First off, I want to thank the city for participating in the Winter Wonderland Story Tour. I think it was a really sweet thing.
Recording in progress.
Really happy to have you guys as partners. I wanted to clarify my last public comment on the sheriff's contract. My human, it doesn't matter if you pay a hundred and fifty thousand or two hundred thousand, the service will be the same. There'll be no improvements, no difference, stolen, same bicycle stolen, same people reaching around town. So I'm pleased that our manager is negotiating with the sheriff for a more palatable price. I question the motives of many in this room, especially at the last meeting, concerning our sheriff's coverage and contract. It seems the motives of our neighbors is not to get the best bang for our buck from the sheriffs, but to buck our manager. It's impossible for me to accept the financial made-up printouts of someone who's not a financial planner, but whose motives are to mess with the manager. I personally appreciate her efforts. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Darcy.
That funny?
Okay, there's a hand up, but I'll do Kent Sawatsky, and then we'll take this in. Julie again. Okay, Kent.
I will not be off topic. That was tied for nine of them, and that's that item. There's obviously a lot of animosity in the city here. Exhibitted just as, yeah, my thought per comment, but funny, and I wasn't laughing at her. Problem in town, and it relates to something I refer to as NPD. When you have people in positions of power, and they have an unreasonably high sense of self-importance and require constant excessive admiration, feel that they deserve privilege and special treatment, expect to be recognized as superior even without achievements, make achievements and talents seem bigger than they are, be preoccupied with fantasies about success, power, brilliance, beauty, or the perfect mate, believe they are superior to others, can only spend time with or be understood by equal people, be critical of and look down on people they feel are not important, expect special favor and expect other people to do what they want without questioning them. Be envious of others, believe others envy them, behave in an arrogant way, brag a lot, come across as conceited, have secret feelings of insecurity, shame, humiliation, fear of being exposed as a failure. When you have people in leadership that exhibit this, and NPD stands for narcissistic personality disorder. I feel that we have those symptoms in the room. I won't even mention the person's name. That is really detrimental to what happens within the city of Blue Lake. And I'm not a psychologist, but I do have access to them. One of the things you will find as far as a characteristic is when confronted with a fact that they don't seem to want to agree with or accept, they will engage in shaking their head and laughing. And so I do have access to people who are experts in these things. And so for the person who exhibits these particular traits on an ongoing basis, I highly recommend that they get some counseling. The way to see this is basically you can get some counseling and get this dealt with. So that person may wish to do so. Thank you. My opportunity to speak.
And Julie, on Zoom, you have a public comment?
Yeah, hey, guys. Thank you very much for letting me do. I appreciate it, especially at our fans who showed me last week. I understand they're getting used to the new setup and are working on running it. I was unable to just put comment and comment on the agenda items because I was being cluttered on the internet. So I would like to just make a comment on the revenue dollars for the, um, the, um, the, um,
You guys. I know what you're saying.
Downhill, um, it was caught up from some commission members that they're worried about revenue. And we had a really nice community meeting at, um, the Jefferson last week.
We can't hear you real well, Julia.
Julie, we cannot understand what you're saying. I'm not sure.
It's breaking up.
Trying hard. I'd like to say, can you hear me now?
Better, yes.
Okay, I'm gonna put my face straight to it. I, both these community commissions and our community meetings, very nice to have. Um, there was brought up sales tax in here. Did you recall in the past that it was quoted that eighty percent of our sales tax generated for the city was for online sales? And I would just be clear if I can perhaps in the future have a breakdown of our, um, our sales tax revenues and where it comes from. Because if we're gonna base our whole economic development based on that, we should know where it comes from where it should grow. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Erin?
I just want to say that I had a problem this week, and one of the staff members emailed everybody on the city council, and I was thrilled that everybody got ahold of me. Super nice to get to know everybody in a different way, and I really appreciate that. Also, I really appreciate the city letting me bring my donkey to the winter tour horse storytelling thing. I thought it went over. Winterland, okay. So I thought it went over super good, and a lot of kids went through. It was a super good activity, super wholesome, and I thought it was wonderful. So I don't know if this is an appropriate time to say this or not, but I was given an offer by your city attorney, and there's just one thing that's I just picked up like a source.
Yeah, that's on the agenda.
I don't get to talk on that, though, right?
Well, not now. You do then.
Oh, do I then? Right before we go into, there's just a mistake on how it's worded, so.
I think, I think right before we go into closed session. Okay, can we do public comment right before closed session?
Yeah, and Ryan can give you some advice on that if you want to, if you want to ask him what the process would be.
Okay. I didn't know if it was the same as with every, every.
Well, should she make her comment now, or should we wait?
Her short comment.
Sure.
All right.
She would say, yeah.
Okay.
So. And then there's Ryan.
I'm the executor of two family trusts, and one of them is the Patricia Charlie Trust, and one of them is the Richard McClure Trust. And the water tank situation is under the Richard McClure Trust, and you guys have it under the Patricia Charlie Trust, which I'm not even sure why you would have that mixed up. But that's pretty important.
Noted.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, we'll move on then to item four. Appoint real property negotiators. Item four is exclusive negotiating agreement with Kenneth and Tasha Eisner for city-owned assessed parcel and a number of follows. Tasha and Kenneth Eisner have contacted city regarding the potential purchase of the parcel commonly referred to as the city corporation yard. The Eisners have met with the city manager to review the zoning for the parcel and the related appraisal documents. The Eisners are proposing to enter into an exclusive negotiating agreement with the city of Blue Lake to further explore development options for the parcel. The exclusive negotiating agreement is a mechanism by which the owner and the potential developer can explore development opportunities exclusively for a designated period of time. Any future proposal to purchase the property from the city would be brought forward to the council for consideration. The E and A, again, exists, exists, exclusive negotiating agreement does not bind the city to a future sale, but does require that the city negotiate in good faith with the potential developer in the event that they present a project and offer that meets the objectives of the council and the related zoning standards. And there is a draft of the exclusive negotiating agreement. In our packets, the recommended action is that we authorize the city manager and the city attorney to negotiate an exclusive negotiating agreement with Tasha and Kenneth Eisner for assessed parcel number with the specific number, and authorize city staff, including the city manager, the city planner, and the city engineer to explore development options for the parcels.
And I did want to clarify, Mayor Jones, this was the, I've used the same report twice because we had to carry this forward. So at one of, and I can't remember if it was the last meeting or in the meeting before, council had requested also that you, that the council member be placed up as part of that. So the recommended action from myself would also be to include, in the past, we've had Mayor Jones be that person to participate in that.
And that's in the agenda over here.
Yeah, it just got, I just carried forward this agenda report, and I missed that.
Yes, it did. It was in the agenda, but not in the recommended action. All right, so I'll open it now for council for any questions or discussions you'd like to have concerning this.
Can we hear it from the Eisners first?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Tasha, would you like to make some comments? Hi, there. Welcome. Would you like to make any comments concerning tonight's action?
I'm Tasha. My name is Kenny. We are co-owners of a couple of Blue Lake businesses. We own and operate Blue Lake Garbage Company, as well as co-own B and B Portable Toilets and Six Rivers Portable Toilets with my brother, Tavis Kane, and his wife, Jessica. So we have, you know, some interest in the community and what happens there. We consider ourselves Blue Lakers. We live nearby, up Liskam Hill. We don't have any real creative plans of what we're looking to do there. There's a lot of plans for that area, and we're looking to do something that would fit in, whether the deed is as that development moves forward. We've met the architect that's already done a bit of work there.
There's some plans that came out in two thousand and eighteen that looked to be good, just on some options. So it's kind of a good starting point for us to see where we can go with this and just work with the city and develop and try to fit in.
And I think those initial plans were a mix of some retail space and some housing. So something like that is what we're thinking. We don't really have any creative plan plans at this point.
Were those the drawings of Cash Bujo? Was that the architect?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, okay. I'm familiar with those. Thanks.
Correct.
Any questions council would like to make of the Eisners?
Well, I guess I'm a little bit surprised that you don't have a plan. They don't have the ability to develop a plan because they don't have an agreement.
Okay. Right, but it seems like you'd want a plan before you decide, like, if you're gonna buy something, like, you would want to know what you're gonna do with it, I guess.
And that's part of what this E and A allows them to do, is to really work with the city to develop a plan, because they haven't had a chance to, you know, meet with the planners or, you know, develop concepts of the zoning and things. They're, that's what they would like to get to.
Okay.
But in order to do that, that's a lot of money. And so if you're doing that without anything grace that allows you, you know, kind of to hold the property while you're working on that, that's, that puts it in a little bit kind of shakier situation. So what they're asking for is the ability to work through that process, develop a plan for presentation to the council without the ability for the council really to, like, you know, sell that out from underneath them, you know. So they're gonna be expending a lot of resources to get to a point where they can see what kind of development potential this property could, could carry.
Okay.
Yeah, it's kind of too bad that you don't have the draft, the draft drawing of what Cash Bujo did in two thousand and eighteen, if that's, you know, one of the things they're talking about. Hope it now is in there, but it's not in here.
Yeah, so it's not city, it's not city property to, it's, that's Cash's personal, yeah.
Oh.
Those, those plans were not the city's, so.
It's not the buyer, right?
Yeah. Or they could work with, or they could work with a different architect, too. It just, yeah.
Do you all have a timeframe you're looking at for, I mean, if, 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 if the, if a building plan is agreed upon and whatnot, do you have a timeframe for when you'd like to get your structure up and, up and ready?
Have anything set down? We would like to move along as the development happens out there and kind of feel what it's gonna be for that area before we make any firm decisions of what we want to put up there. So no, we don't have a particular timeframe. Do you want me to say? Why are they getting that exclusive?
Yep, I like that. Period of six months from the effective date.
And so my question then would be, six months is gonna give you an opportunity to see what exists there on that parcel, but it's not gonna give you enough time to, to kind of see how other development in the area is going to evolve, so.
Right, right.
It says they can extend it for a minimum.
So maybe you could address what you would do with the six months if there's not going to be a movement of new developments that would help guide your, your ideas and your, your plans, what we could do at that point.
There until we know what that area is gonna look like. So I, I think that it's gonna take some time. I think it's gonna take longer than six months for sure to be able to determine what the best use of that particular parcel is. In the meantime, we've just been spending it up and getting it ready and prepared and work with the architect in the city to determine different options, but I don't think that we're gonna be able to be ready to present something with the six.
There's a lot of due diligence that has to be done. I mean, there's a lot of inquiry based upon concepts, to look at zoning regulations, looking at infrastructure. There's a lot of upfront planning that takes place to develop a legitimate concept.
Okay, I'm opening it up to public.
Julie, can you see me again? Can you guys see me up today this time?
Yeah, much better.
Thank you. Um, I would like to start off saying I'm really excited that we have some local business owners already in the infrastructure in this whole area. Um, and we're going to try to make things, like, if we should prioritize that, we'll understand that, yeah. I was concerned, however, that when we were first alluded that potentially the courtyard back for the planning committee meeting, that, because we have some cancellations, that was only about maybe four planning commission meetings ago by. And at that time, when I personally asked, is that up for options? It was just quoted that potentially it could be. So I think it's always interesting that that verbiage was used then, and then here we are now with, um, so they just did business owners, and I think that's great. However, when we're dealing with our city properties, I feel like it's a little bit of a landslide when we're given verbiage, like, potentially, and then here we are. I do support you guys going into negotiations. Um, I think that we need support our local business owners. I think we need to ask some questions about where our yard's going to be relocated. I do believe there was verbiage in the past at the Suetre plant that also needs a lot of attention. And I think we should clarify what we're gonna do with our infrastructure. And I'm glad that we're, we're intentional negotiations minded, because we still have to work on the general plan, off the housing element, off the road, so it's a lot of work to do. So let's hope for being open-minded, but meantime, what are we gonna do with our courtyard? And what are we gonna do with the rest that needs to be facilitated before they actually can invest in the property? They want to, I guess, well, thank you.
Thank you. Kent Sawatsky?
Kent Sawatsky, I'd like to echo what Julie said. We're considering developing in Blue Lake. My phone number is six six eight five two eight eight. I am a developer. I'm currently moving my development in Mexico, New Long Beach, maybe. But I have to deal with the, that we can change projects of the year in. You want to spend a lot of time going over measure O and see how that works. I think the probably, the plan you probably, you have somebody ahead of you. Hopefully, in February, the Ryan Russo project, which is contiguous to yours, will be coming before the planning commission. Strongly recommend you communicate with Mr. Russo to find out what hoops he had to go through. He'd be a great neighbor for you. I think the original plan that was shown there had a roadway in the back between you two parcels, which benefited both of you to have a common ground. And having done development, I saw those plans, and it totally made a bunch of sense to me for you guys to share that, and it gives you access to your parcel in a buildable manner. As far as what you guys have, have, as far as you're negotiating, this is the normal process, and those of us in this understand you wouldn't go forward without having this timeframe. I strongly support you getting an extension because I think it's gonna be necessary. The city on these projects had wanted to know specifically what you're doing prior to you actually acquiring the property. So you, you need to have some kind of concept. You said you want to have residential and commercial, and that's a good thing. I would work with Cash and see what you want to do there. One thing the people have here, we have one project out there that people are strongly against. I do the opposite of what Danko project is. I think we're a rural community, and you may find that the rural atmosphere is something we wish to preserve. Ryan's project is nine units, and the biggest project we have in Blue Lake's ten units. There are things in the, what we brought forward later is not to have more than two stories in a Blue Lake, and yet we're having, we're having those things. So the rural atmosphere is important, I'm sure, to you as it is to us, and hopefully you will work with the city and other developers and people in the public to get a buy-in. We'd love to have a buy-in of project that we can support, the same as we're able to largely, if to reach this project. So again, feel free to call me at any time, and I'd be happy to. The advice you get might not be worth anything, but you're not paying anything anyway, so there you go. Pleasure to have you guys. Consider us, you may also check and see what Danko got. I think they got a ninety-nine-year lease for a dollar a year. Maybe that's going rate for you. I would hate to see you guys be disadvantaged as far as the price you're paying for the property. I know it's probably a praise at five fifty, if I remember, five hundred and fifty thousand. Prior person there who was looking at this stuff, there might be a million dollars worth cleanup to bring the site to the same condition as a Danko project. It's not completed, I think. Good luck on your project, and I appreciate you guys doing this.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
I don't see any.
Okay, so we'll move it back to council. What is the pleasure of the council? I would be happy to be the person that negotiates as representing the council, but if there is someone else that would like to, I can certainly agree to that as well.
I would be interested in doing that. I'm, I'm a little concerned about the timeframe. So presumably, this agreement would go for six months and then get a six-month extension at the end of that time. Is that correct?
Yeah, and I think they would have to apply for it. Wouldn't they have to?
Well, at the end of the six months, a lot of different things can happen. I mean, at the end of six months, they might have a really good concept, and they might want to come to you and propose a purchase. They might, at the end of the six months, come to you and say, you know what, we just, you know, have lost interest in the project, or we don't think it's viable, or, and we, you know, we don't want to go any further. They might come and say, hey, we'd like to modify the scope a bit. And, you know, there's, there's a whole host of things that could come from the six-months process. They may come and say that they do need more time to, to kind of work through a process. But this is the first step. This allows the city and the Eisners to be a little bit more serious about development potential, ideas, concepts. Um, you know, s- studies that they may need to, uh, conduct and, uh, to get us to a point where a, another conversation takes place.
All right, so that leaves us to.
Recommendation. I move to move the E N A as written in the, uh, agenda.
Uh, is your motion going to reflect who is part of the, yeah, negotiating committee?
I have no, I have no comment on that. Who's gonna fight about it?
Well, we have to make that decision as well.
I just want, I, I just wanna clarify that the, the action is agendized just for the appointment of the real property negotiators. Um, and those negotiators will work with the project, um, opponents and bring back to the council for approval at a later date, the actual exclusive negotiating agreement. So tonight's action is simply to appoint the real property negotiators.
Yeah, we could have two. Cause we can't have three. That would be a council, but you could have two if you wanted to. Um, so it sounds like we need to have more of an, uh, authorizing the city manager, the city attorney and a certain council person to negotiate an exclusive negotiating agreement with Tasha and Kenneth Eisner.
Do you wanna do it with the lease?
No, it can't be.
You just said it can be.
It can be two. Oh.
I thought he said tonight, all we're doing is getting the negotiating committee together.
Yes, right, right. Do you wanna be on it as well?
Yes, I would.
Cause on the agenda, it lists the city manager, the city attorney and you specifically. So we add a second person.
All right, so we.
Say your motion again.
Uh, as written, but add a lease. I would like to make a motion as it's written, but add a lease as a self, uh, person to do the negotiations.
Okay. I'll second that. I'm doing the math in my head, sorry.
It's a really long.
So for, so for negotiators.
Yes.
Manager, attorney, and two council members.
Yes, the recommended action, but add those two people.
Okay, good.
Uh, there's been a motion by Chris Edgar, seconded by Angela Shaw to have a negotiating committee of the city manager, the city attorney, Mayor Adeline Jones and Councilperson Ali Skafani. Any further discussion? We've had a second from Angela Shaw, so we're waiting now for the vote. Is there any further discussion? Falls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? It passes. All right, let's move on then to the Blue Lake Power lease agreement.
Thank you, Tasha and Kenny.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Good night. Okay, item number five. The city attorney, Ryan Plots, will provide an update on the status of the Blue Lake Power legal filings. The city manager will provide an update on the site cleanup and equipment removal activities. The impact is that the city has initiated legal proceedings to recover monetary damages along with recovery of the project, of the property. Uh, Mandy, did you wanna comment on this or should we ask the?
I think, um, Ryan, do you wanna go ahead and, so hard. Yeah, do you wanna go ahead and start, Ryan?
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll be brief. I just, um, I, I just wanna give the council an update since we last met in closed session, just on the fact that in October, our office filed litigation against Blue Lake Power, um, which is our tenant, uh, on the property and has been for some time. Um, for both termination of the lease, um, and damages, those damages include unpaid rent, holdover damages, attorney's fees, um, penalties and interest. The litigation has been filed and it's working its way through the process. When we get to a point of significance, we will agendize a closed session to discuss in more detail. But I just wanted to give the council that update at this time. And, uh, any questions, I can answer to the extent of the public filing. Um, some questions may be more appropriate for a closed session discussion and we can have that uh, at a future meeting if that's the council's desire.
Would it be appropriate for you to answer the question I have of whether you've had any um, response from Blue Lake Power on any of these, uh, letters that you've sent?
They have not responded in the, in the lawsuit. Um, they are a suspended limited liability company, so technically they cannot respond in the litigation. Mandy is gonna give an update on some direct communications we've had with their principals. Um, and so they, they, they are talking with the city, um, but uh, they have not yet responded in the litigation.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions from council?
Uh, yeah, what kind of timeframe after this do we think we might be able to take control over the property again?
Yeah, we filed, um, uh, some reactions for unlawful detainer. Um, and so the way that works is, um, once they respond, if they respond within the time allowed by law, um, then we can request a trial and a trial needs to be set within twenty days of our request. Um, if the court finds in our favor, then a judgment would enter in our favor, uh, rent possession would issue and we would have control over the property. If they don't respond within the time required by law, then we can seek a default judgment, um, and get rid of possession that way. Um, we're probably, if I had to guess, we're probably fifteen to forty-five days away from finalizing that process.
So we, we should know within forty-five days if we will get the property. Now, that's awesome. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because the lease actually ends in twenty twenty-five, which is in another year anyway. I don't know what month, if that's important in twenty twenty-five, but I know that year is when the lease expires. But it looks like this is gonna occur before that unless they, uh, appeal or something.
All right, any other questions? So they're speaking to you?
Yeah, so I can just provide kind of a quick update. Um, we've been working for quite a while to look at options for cleaning up the site. Uh, we've been working with Humboldt County, um, and some of the various agencies who have, uh, permits and um, authorities over the site for various, um, for various reasons. Um, so we've been, we've been pretty proactive at just making sure we had a good handle on uh, what was going to be necessary in the future and kind of what some options would be. Um, I've had, recently had some contact with, uh, Glenn Zane, um, regarding their intent to remove, um, the plant, um, and the fuels, uh, from the site and to work with the city to, um, you know, make the site as whole again as, um, as possible. Um, you know, anything that they take off the site at this point is something that the city doesn't have to remove in the future.
Who is this individual?
Glenn Zane, so he is one.
Glenn Zane?
Glenn Zane, yeah. Um, okay, so he is, um, he is not a, a principal, but he is, um.
What's his title? Manager?
Oh, I'm not really sure. It's changed over the years. Um, so he's one of the main spokespeople for, for the project. Um, and he's one, has been one of the more local, uh, representatives over the years. He's been involved with the plant for, since I think it was Ultra Power, so it's, he's got some history. No, he lives in Reading. Um, so I did have a conversation with Glenn, um, last week and he said that you know, he's willing to come to the table and sit down with the city and talk about a, um, a plan for cleaning up the site. Um, it is their intent, he said, to remove the facilities. Um, there are some aspects of the plant that have some value to them. Um, because there, I believe they operate another plant, um, that's similar in age, um, that they may be able to basically part it out. Um, and that's kind of, I think, the direction that it'll go. I was happy to at least have that conversation. Um, you know, you can't, you can't sneak, you know, removing a plant. And so, you know, being able to come to the table and sit down and come up with a plan, um, you know, be grownups about the process and work together, that's in the city's best interest too, I believe. Um, like I said, the, the less we have to remove ourselves for any future project is just a cost savings to the city. Um, I have also been in touch with another individual who's working to, um, help, uh, facilitate removal of the fuel, um, which is the wood chips. Um, so that's great also. That takes up the majority of the property. Um, so those conversations are taking place kind of simultaneously and parallel to the legal filings. Um, so I think it's, um, a positive step forward to at least be having a conversation, um, about this process and to know that they, they are making, um, commitments at this point, whatever, um, level those are to, to you know, maintaining at least that aspect of the lease agreement.
Great. Ryan, um, I have a, I have a question. I'm not sure it can be answered here, but I was thinking, um, when you said if Blue Lake Power does not respond to the filing, then the judgment would just go straight to the city. Did I hear that correct?
Yeah, i- if, if the party doesn't respond within, uh, within five days of service, it's actually extended here. We had to serve through post and mail, uh, then we can file for default. Uh, and then a default judgment would issue. When we file for default, that prevents Blue Lake Power from answering the complaint. Um, and allows us to go straight to judgment. Um, that can be set aside and there's some process involved with that, but, um, that seems like what's likely to happen, given their limited liability company as in suspension status with the state of California.
So then the judgment could be for part of what's being asked in the lawsuit or all of what's being asked in the suit?
Initially, it'll be just for possession of the property.
Okay.
Um, and then the action, and then we will file declarations and evidence supporting the amount of damages. And then the judgment will be amended to include a monetary portion, um, which we will then, um, order in all relevant counties and states where assets may be located, um, and go forward that way.
Thanks for the clarification.
Uh, so when does the, the clock start? You said forty-five days. And so the documents have been sent to them, so when does the time start?
Uh, the deadline for response is, I believe, uh, at the end of December because of post and mail, they actually have a fifteen day window to serve. We just got the order for post and mail back, uh, this week. So I, I, I haven't had confirmation from our process server that it's been posted, um, but if, if it wasn't done today, it should be done tomorrow. We tried, we tried service in Reading, uh, at the agent for services residence. Um, and after about six attempts, the process server was unsuccessful.
Okay, any other questions from council before I open this up? This is a non-action item. We're just getting an update on what's going on here. It's a critical time for our city in many ways. Uh, thank you for being here, Attorney Plots. Um, I'm opening it up to public comment. Kent Sowatsky and Julie.
Not being attorney, you will wanna ask, uh, questions of your council. You're, you're, you're involved with what I call a throwaway LLC. It's in suspension. I don't even think that unless it's brought out of suspension, uh, the person that Mandy's been talking to could negotiate a deal. You might ask your county council that through the chair. You can always do a deal with somebody once you take possession of it and you probably could even do a deal before you take possession contingent upon taking possession. That's something that might have to happen. I strongly support you doing your due diligence and find out what the value of those assets are, if there is any value. In other words, uh, get an estimate from, uh, put out an R F P for demolition of what's there. And that would give you an idea as far as the person doing that. There's companies that do this, Wall of Construction. Uh, there's, uh, Figa's Construction does it, and I think North Coast Fabricators are known for doing it and I've had, had these kind of projects before. That way you know what it's gonna cost most likely when these people just plain and simply walk away. It enables you to go ahead and, uh, plan for exit strategy here, and they could also tell you how long it would take them to do the demolition. I don't think there's, there's anything, maybe you're ju- done jumping a little bit, but I think I recommend that process. And then, of course, when you do have demolition there or removal of these things, there's a great amount of concern regarding toxics on that site, including hydraulic fluid and other things that I allegedly have been there. And you wanna make sure that you get all your demolition permits to all the, uh, local and state agencies that are required to go ahead and do that before you allow anybody to come in there and. I appreciate, appreciate you crossing your teeth and dotting your i's. And you, uh, you may wish to ask your, ask your council either now or sometime in closed session, whether the statements I've been making are correct and I would appreciate being corrected if they're incorrect. Uh, we are in a bad position. You're dealing with a terrible tenant who had no intention of, uh, paying you. And there, they, this is the process, government process and LLC throwaway, they do them all the time. And then you're, you're dealing with, with no pocket, no recourse. Thank you for speaking, other than getting it back.
Thank you. Julie? It could be better.
How is this better?
A little.
I'm just a little concerned that if litigation began in October, why is this now an agenda item? Um, when so many, like, Ginning and Grant spent on that site with the Storyland and our, um, Sasha and Mel were recent, um, if they can't respond, but are requesting to respond, how does that work? It was happening, their lease might be needed for this Storyland, like, the beginning issues. I mean, back when we were first quoted by the mayor saying, you deny them these because we have other ideas. And then, you know, I can quote, we still didn't stay out there and according to out there, the other councils may think it's a crazy idea. But this is what the future would like to be. I mean, I'm just concerned that they were denying the lease and if we file for default, are they not allowed or offered to speak at our meetings? And concerned that they're, they're, they, they not wanting to come to our meetings and talk to us and stuff concerning me. And they've been asked. I feel like this is like a nothing whose, uh, business, and I'm not saying that it was their time to go. Uh, I just really hope that we don't have to then be compensated because we admitted the lease agreement from them, that they're worse stuck, you know, on the. I mean, we need for us to use these planes. It's what we own as a community, which you really can't find as a community. And I'm just really kind of concerned that we admitted location with them. Uh, when it wasn't even a council speaking, getting, like, completely complete, loved that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, back to council. This is really, as I said, just information item. No action is anticipated, just an update. So if there's nothing further on this, we'll move on to next item, which is item uh, number six, City of Blue Lake Leash Law Update. At the request of the community, the city council directed staff to upi- update the city's dog ordinance to implement a leash law requirement. The city attorney, Ryan Plots, will provide an update on the status of the ordinance, including an implementation schedule. So if you would do that, thank you, Ryan.
Sure, absolutely. Um, draft ordinance has been prepared and it's with staff. Um, as in speaking with Mandy, it looks like we're scheduled for, uh, introduction and first reading of the proposed ordinance at your next meeting in January. Um, it's, as you know, ordinances are a two-step process where you, you introduce it, conduct. you introduce it, conduct your first reading, and then it goes to a subsequent meeting for second reading and adoption, and then it's effective thirty days after that. In substance, the ordinance makes it unlawful for any owner or person in charge or in control of any dog to, uh, allow such dog to be unsecured, um, within the city, uh, on public property. Um, and, uh, it's pretty straightforward. It models, um, leash laws in various other jurisdictions. They're pretty uniform, um, especially, uh, in Humboldt County. Um, and so I expect that ordinance to be before you at your January meeting.
Thank you. Um, there is one area, the dog park at, uh, Perrigo Park, that should be exempt from that.
It, it is.
Thank you.
As well as service dogs, um, and law enforcement, uh, dogs, that, uh, they, uh, exist or become available in the future.
Any other questions from council? We'll be seeing.
Is the levy considered in the city?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Is the levy considered inside the city?
The river. I thought that was.
Perhaps you can answer that. I, I'm not sure the e- exact outer boundary of, uh, the city.
Okay. Yeah, the levy's always been a little bit of a quasi jurisdictional issue. The eastern levy is definitely in the county. Um, the county manages the western levy, um, but we also have some responsibility. We also have some property, um, that I'm not exactly sure where that exact boundary is. So that can be something that we look at, but it's, there is some cross-jurisdictional, um, issues. And I'm not exactly sure where, like, the surveyed actual line is in that area. I mean, just because we own property outside the city limits, um, so I'm not, I'm not exactly sure on that.
And also the river moved. I mean, it used to be the river on the west side was our city limit.
Mm-hmm.
But when the river moves, then all of a sudden there's a portion that suddenly becomes part of the city.
Yeah, and I'm not really sure, like I said, the, the survey of the levy, um, I don't know if that was, um, identified and established ownership, if that's the line or not. It's, it's somewhere right in that area, but I don't know exactly, honestly. And like I said, there are those cross-jur- jurisdictional issues, um, between the county, the city, um, already, so that can be something.
And I'm happy to look at that in advance at next meeting. Um, you can look at the, uh, the latest Slavco Municipal Service Review that has the city's boundary sphere of influence, and I can check that and we're back at your next meeting.
Yeah, would you do that? Because I think that's going to be really critical, especially for dog owners and people are concerned with this leash law.
We do a lot of maintenance on there too, right?
Although.
We not necessarily know. We partner, um, but it's the county that manages the majority of the maintenance. And they manage the, the gate and all of it, so there's got to be some document somewhere that identifies that boundary.
Yeah, exactly where it would be.
Does it state, I'm, oh, sorry. Um, does it state, uh, who's responsible if somebody just lets their dog run around?
It would still be under county control out there.
No, in the city.
Oh.
Who's going to enforce this?
Oh, gotcha.
Because that was an issue.
Yeah.
Does it have any?
I'm assuming that it'll be under our animal, uh, contract with the, with the county.
That's correct.
Okay, any other questions from council before I open it to public? Public comment on this item? Kent Sawatsky?
And if, if it would be nice if, yeah, rather than the Friday before the meeting, if you had a draft at any time could be posted on the website of the city, when you reached a, a draft you felt comfortable with the public looking at. So we had a little bit of advance notice. If I understood you correctly, uh, possibly, uh, it really won't matter, uh, whether, uh, the, the levy is in the county or not, if I understood you. The county has the exact same leash law, very similar to what we have, so there would be an applicable leash law either to be within their jurisdiction or the cities. Uh, you may wish to ask that question of your counsel. Um, I, I, I'm so happy to see this coming forward. It's been quite a while since this initial process started, and, uh, just as an example, we had a dog walk in here a little while ago and stay for a little while and walk out, so obviously, uh, public property at a meeting. Uh, not that I felt threatened by the dog or anything of that nature, but it is a law that people will take a while. I'm not looking for really strong enforcement to start with. People need to understand it, get a couple warnings or something of that nature. And, uh, we do want to avoid the liability. Uh, I also think that sometime you may wish to in closed session or whatever, have consult with your competent counsel and, uh, and see if, if, if it would be beneficial for us to enter into a further contract with the sheriff's department to actually be the ones who would come in here with their liability insurance and enforce the leash law, uh, rather than us having to set up. Uh, once you have a leash law, then, in my opinion, you have an implied obligation to enforce that law. It's, you, if you put it in place. Uh, that's a few comments from me. Thank you for my opportunity to speak. I wish no one was here to see us getting this far all of a sudden, so.
Yeah. Thank you. Uh, Julie and then Dennis Whitcomb?
Is everybody able to hear me okay?
Yeah, now we can.
That's a good connection.
Hi guys, I think it's calling for baby pigs and lambs. I appreciate your patience and I appreciate Zoom. And I'm stoked to see this on our agenda. Um, I've been an advocate from the beginning, speaking on at least leash law, um, opposition. I think we should enforce it in town um, in a way that it is signage. I put that out before numerous public comments. I think it's important for our city to at least invest in signage that your dogs should be leashed in areas. You do realize, uh, on our city page, there is a beautiful map that shows you where city limits are, and it does kind of go on the flip side of the levy, and we have already, I do believe, adopted that as a sphere of influence for us, um, so I would assume that would constitute, but from there on, um, except for a small portion by the bridge, everybody's off on the public, or excuse me, private property except for the floodline. But I think we need to go back to the fact that, yes, we cannot perhaps enforce the leash law, and it's not saying that the city is going to enforce it or the sheriff's. However, when we have special cases that there is, uh, injury involved, that these victims of these situations are then able to use the fact that the city has a leash law and at least protect themselves a lot better. Okay, I think it's really important. Hear me now, I'm on the county, but the amount of dogs I've had coming here and had to deal with over the years is saddening. And so everything that it could be, something happening in town, I let my son walk, I let him ride his bike, he should have those freedoms, but in the back of my mind, I am always scared of sad dogs. But at the same time, if you have a leash law, it gives me a protection as a parent to know that if somebody's dog is after my kid on his bike and it's not coming back, because it's not leashed, I have protection for my son. And I think that's the most thing that most people are worried about. It's not the fact that we're going to demand that every dog be leashed, but the fact that if they're not and they do something bad, we have protection as citizens and as parents. So I, I strongly support or commit to, and counsel, like, supporting this. We need to get it done. It's been over a year. I think we are almost at that year mark that we've been trying. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Dennis Whitcomb?
Yes, uh, I, uh, would like to suggest that the trails at the river be left, uh, accepted from your policy. So the dogs, dogs can roam out there in, in a more natural environment. And another suggestion would be to use a larger dog park than the one at, uh, the ball field. Maybe the old dump uh, would, would be suitable if it was, uh, prepared. But otherwise, we'd have to truck our dogs out to another city in order to give them some freedom. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Any other comments on this item? Okay, we'll be coming back to our January twenty-third meeting.
Kind of addressed Dennis's, um, thought about the river bar. The river bar is not, is absolutely not part of the city, therefore the leash law would not be effective on this.
That's my understanding of it.
And also the county doesn't have a leash law. There's no leash laws in Humboldt County. It's a city, city thing, that's because like, that's why we're getting this is because we were based off of what the county already had.
Okay, but.
If, if I could just add, you know, as an enforcement mechanism, uh, the lease, the ordinance, um, does incorporate our administrative citation process. It's already built into our municipal code that allows, you know, our code compliance, to cite, um, and impose fines, um, against violators. It doesn't have to be smoothly enforced through the sheriff's office.
Thank you for that clarification. All right, any other discussion on this item? Nope, we'll move on then to item number seven, which is closed conference with real property negotiators, um.
Use the restroom?
I suppose if you need to. Um, so we'll be going into closed session for this government code with the councils.
Uh, Elizabeth, maybe we need to make a motion first to go into closed session, do you think? No?
Do you need to ask for a public comment on the item before we go into closed session?
Okay, thank you.
The background material, the city has initiated negotiations with the McClure Family Trust to address the ongoing use of the property for the city's water tank. The city's water tank has been located on the property for over one hundred years. The prior lease has expired. The city has been working to negotiate a new agreement for long-term use. The city currently provides the trust with three water connections and free water in exchange for use of the property. The city attorneys in the process of negotiating a new agreement with the trust administrator will provide an update in the process along with proposed agreement options. Uh, public comment on this? Kent Sawatsky? And Julie?
You set a wonderful precedent a little while ago for, uh, property negotiations, and I think this falls close to the same category. I would recommend that, uh, either you use your two appointments being, uh, Mayor Jones and Elise Cifani to also participate in this if they're willing, or else find two other, uh, council members to participate. Uh, this makes the public happy. You're the people that we elect to put in these positions, and we feel it's important for, for our appointed people to be also part of, of negotiation, be knowledgeable how the process is going. Um, so I highly recommend that, um, this can be a very difficult position for the city to be in. I multiple times have heard the city say they do not need that particular easement. They don't need that. And that was, uh, done by both, uh, I think it was your, uh, your planner and another one of your city staff members, so, um, good luck on the negotiations, uh. I think maybe you really need to make sure that people understand that they're even supposed to be in the room for negotiations if you're going to have them. I don't know if you have a formal process of letting someone know they need to be here. If you don't, I highly recommend you adapt when otherwise people wouldn't even be aware that they're expected to be in the room unless they happen to read your, read your agendas on their own, or somebody lets them know they're on there. So that's something that your legal department might wish to counsel you on as far as proper notification prior to negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie?
Yes, thank you, and I'll be quick. Uh, I would, uh, also hope that you guys will be quick with your, um, negotiations for all our community members that would like to participate. Um, I would like to have seen in the packet material, um, or potentially in future packet material as we progress with these negotiations. Um, since the city is already constituting free water rights, it would be nice to have that number. Um, I know potentially it could just come up at five or ten year average, but given the rates in town, that's an exponential amount of usage potentially, and it would be nice for us to know what that is, to see if that's negotiable matter. Um, hopefully everybody doesn't have to wait out long, outside long. I'm out here. Thank you. Okay, bye.
Thank you. Okay, so I believe the protocol is now we, um, make a motion to go into closed session, and there's a government code, but I don't see it written here, but it's for negotiations with real property. Um, so if someone wants to make that motion.
So moved.
Okay, motion made by Elizabeth Lake, second by Angela Schall to go into closed session per government code. Conference with real property negotiations. Any further discussion from council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We're in closed session. So to our coun- council meeting of Tuesday, December nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, coming out of closed session, we have no reportable action um, to be taken. We're now on item eight, City of Blue Lake, nineteen ninety-seven, Community Visioning Report Review. In nineteen ninety-seven, the City of Blue Lake was awarded funding through the USDA Forest Service Program to conduct a community visioning study and subsequent report. The study was conducted over multiple community sessions, and a team of community members was established to conduct outreach and follow-up regarding identified initiatives. The study focused on the future of Blue Lake as it was transitioning from a more industrial-focused community to a more recreation and art-based community. The report focused on a variety of initiatives, including economic revitalization of the downtown and the development of an RV park and campground. The city has been reviewing the plan to see how current initiatives align with the community plan envisioned in nineteen ninety-seven, and to see where progress has been made or where changes or modifications have occurred. The city's commissions have been provided with a copy of the report, and they're in the process of reviewing the material as well. Staff is recommending that the council review the report and direct staff to update the status of the various initiatives. Staff would like to bring back the updated report at a future meeting and present the status to council for further direction. And we have the community visioning report in our packets for review. And it was nice to see that a few of us are still around. And sadly, some of us are not. Sherman Shapiro has moved to Eureka. Ron Brunson has moved to greener pastures on. And, but then some of us have remained, such as myself and a few others. Um, so, um, would you like to go page by page? As well.
Can I bring up one thing?
Yeah, okay, sure. Okay. So let's see here. We'll start with the cover page. Visioning and Strategic Plan. So the first page just talks about, um, the Community Visioning and Strategic Plan. Meetings were held in October and November of nineteen ninety-six. Um, and four projects were identified and action plans recreated. As a result, those projects are Plug the Leaks, Local Consumption, Expanded Natural Resource Utilization, Recreation and Entertainment, Arts and Culture, and Infrastructure Downtown Planning. And then, yeah.
Recall, um, were these meetings like all day long meetings or, you know, one or two hours or?
They were pretty lengthy. They were held at the Mad River Grange, and, um, we were spread out with tables and we, um, were in groups for a while, then we'd come together, um, as a whole. Um, there were a lot of other things we did, like, I think we were given Post-it notes to prioritize things, if I recall.
Were you there, Mandy?
I wasn't.
You weren't, you weren't. Yeah, I was there. So I'm thinking, no, I wasn't. This is twenty-five years ago. I was just trying to remember. Um. and it was facilitated by, you know, some really good people that you noted here.
Just trying to get a sense of how, of how much time went into it. Um, I understand. I understand it was facilitated by by professionals and it says that, you know, there were seventy people that took part.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to get a sense of of the time.
I remember it. Yeah, I remember sitting in the back when my grandmother dealt with it.
Yeah, that's right. Your grandmother was involved. I think she was mayor at the time, but I'm not sure. Yeah, okay. Um, so now I'm on page one. The strategic planning process for Blue Lake consider three distinct phases, the vision, the shared vision for the future Blue Lake. Prioritization at the second meetings, the participants were asked to prioritize which component should receive immediate attention, and the action plans. The participants developed four initial components, component action plans, which provides specific steps for moving towards the realization of community goals. So the ongoing steps of the strategic planning process are as follows, as followed. Evaluate accomplishments of action plans, revisit the community vision, set new priorities, and create new action plans. So that's page one. So categorization, page three. I don't know, page two. Wait a minute. Nice, good one?
That's where the clowns are in the street. What happened to that?
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
Been in the streets for a while.
Yeah, I read a poem about the clowns in the street. Yeah, it was very nice. I don't know who wrote it, but it's really sweet. Um, so the the vision evolved from the idea bank, the brainstormed ideas of the participants. These ideas were then categorized into themes. Most of the themes, theme categories have components as well, which are also listed. The full idea bank is on page fourteen and can be referred to in the future for the community's ideas. The major themes and components are recreation and entertainment, employment opportunities and downtown business development, infrastructure and land use, and community pride and awareness, youth and elders, and housing. These are numerous logical overlap. There are numerous logical overlaps in relationships among the six theme categories. These categories emerge from all of the ideas because they each serve a different function in the city and reflect upon how community members will most likely organize to work on projects. Um, and then the prioritization was the second meeting. We reviewed our vision. Each community member was asked to vote on the project he or she felt needed the most immediate attention and that he she was willing to admit to help successfully complete. Four components were chosen by the community, and this is where we came up with the four, Expanded Natural Resource Utilization, Arts and Culture, Plug the Leaks dash Local Consumption, and Downtown Planning. The participants then chose the component they wanted to concentrate on and organized into groups. Each component group reviewed the ideas that had been generated in the brainstorming session, and new ideas were added to the lists. So now we come to um Community Action Planning Forum theme, Recreation Entertainment. The team leader was Adeline Jones. Um, Expanded Natural Resource Utilization, Community Access to Forest. And so then there were projects, tasks, resources available, who was responsible, and the target date for completion. So from the projects we we defined back in nineteen ninety-six was Water Tower Access Through Private Property. Contact the landowners. Peter Busman was one of the landowners, and Barbara Lane was going to be responsible for that and target date for completion. But I don't know why it says eighty-six, ninety-six. Yeah, thank you. And then um we moved on to Hattery Road through Simpson Link to Arcata, contact Simpson, and then Bart, that was um John Bartholomew was to contact Simpson. Buckley Road off of Blue Lake Boulevard, the waterfall, the private property, contact the waterfall owners. Barbara Lane was supposed to do that.
We've been contacted and asked to take this out. Just one hundred percent reasonable.
Yeah.
Oh, and I don't understand the purpose for having Water Tower access through private property. That, that to me doesn't make any sense. This first, the first item with the property owner, Peter Busman.
Was the second, it was access to the water towers on the secondary water tower that we have.
Right, but for the public to just wander around with the water tower?
No, no.
Just for us to have access, Blue Lake.
No, it didn't mean that we were gonna have access to it.
I don't think we're talking about trails.
Yeah.
And looking for, well, it's community access to the forest, so I would think so. Yeah.
Yeah, community access.
So it was trail, potential trail development?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Different areas in the community where you might be able to develop a trail.
But if that's what we're talking about, then we should probably take off the Water Tower access.
Well, so what I would propose, what I was proposing is that you would take this and we would update this, and these items that don't make sense, um, or, you know, or have changed or modified, that we would create new tables from this to show where we are now and to then use that as a baseline also to um come up with maybe new objectives or ideas um through future planning efforts.
Well, I mean.
I don't think anyone has any interest in any, I mean, these.
Hattery Road through Simpson Link to Arcata.
There's already, and being, some of the stuff's already happened. There's the mountain biking trails. There's already a ton of work being done to make that linkage and stuff.
Yeah.
Well, I'm wondering, one of the things that I, when I was, when I was reviewing this the other day, I was looking at it and I, what I was wondering is what if any of these things were complete, like, there's a target date for completion, but there's not a follow-up component to it, like, like, was it, was it something that wasn't going to happen? Was it something that did happen and was, you know what I'm saying? So there wasn't that follow-through component, so I'm kind of you know, wondering about that. And was this all done with, under like the guidance of um of Jim Kimbrel and Maureen Hart? Like, did they lead these two sessions?
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm out there.
Yeah, they did.
Lead the two sessions?
Yeah, they did. They were the facilitators, and we came up with these ideas. Um, and, you know, twenty-five years later, they may, they may be meaningless, really. They, I mean, in, in looking at this, if this has to do with recreation entertainment, you know, there's nothing here about the Annie and Mary Rail Trail. I mean, that wasn't even on people's radar much. Um.
So the Great Redwood Trail could be added then? We could update this, so we would add.
I, sorry.
I mean, add it or.
My question is, what are, what do we really want to do with this report? I mean, I, I feel like we could spend a couple hours just digging through it and, and really understanding it. Um, but twenty-seven years after these meetings happened, does it have any real relevance today? You know, in guiding anything that we're doing, and what kind of time commitment do we want to put into um evaluating that and going forward with it?
I absolutely do believe it has a ton of relevance because that's what this action plan was built for, was for people to come back to it like this and look at it and see where they've come and what is going on and where it could be adjusted to our time that we need now.
I think as staff too, it's highly, it's still highly relevant. I mean, a lot of these projects, these projects take years. They can take decades.
These were thirty years, they were thinking thirty, forty, fifty years in advance when they did this.
Sure, sure, but um I understand that. I'm just thinking, you know, what, is there, is this, is, is going through this line by line, a city council meeting item, or should we be having some sort of a community meeting, some sort of a working session where we invite more people to weigh in and discuss all this? Uh, because it seems to me we could, like I say, we could spend quite a lot of time with this report. Um, but I feel like it's bigger than just the people in this room. If, if it is something that's going to become some sort of a guiding um document for, for, for Blue Lake. Does that make sense?
I, I kind of agree, yes, because I think this whole thing of us going over everything in here, seeing what's relevant to us still today, what's been accomplished, what needs to be accomplished, that could be a four or five hour meeting just in itself.
Right, well, and the whole point was that it was a community visioning report.
Yeah.
Where we don't encompass the entire community.
So what I would recommend as staff is you give us the, a chance to go through here and update where we know we are, what projects we know didn't come to fruition, and narrow the scope down a little bit for you. Um, because this was in nineteen ninety-seven. There are a lot of things that, you know, we can go through and say that never happened. Obviously, these forest trails never happened. We can easily take these off. Uh, we can update you on some of the projects that are taking place or have taken place, so you can see the progress that has been made, and then we can kind of look at where we are as well to see if where we're trending right now is in alignment with this vision plan that, you know, that has been used for decades to, to guide the city in economic investment. Um, so I think staff could help whittle this down for you.
Well, that's what I thought we were kind of doing too, because, you know, some of the things we'd like to throw out even from page one, the Water Tower and then.
Well, also, we were talking about like the, you said the the river trails are started, but not really because you have to be part of the club to even use the trails, and it's not the trails that are stated here. It's the opposite side.
Work being done to make that connection between Arcata and Blue Lake. Um, the city's been working with Humboldt County um for a number of years on that project as well, as we're looking at, you know, mountain biking, recreation, fishing, uh, more access. Um, so we've been part of those larger conversations too, because it's a direct connection to, for us, for economic development and ecotourism and recreation tourism.
So um are there other documents or other um resources that that begun with this um with this effort that are currently being used with the city, or is it more of a conceptual?
I think this was, I think this laid out a larger vision. You know, at the time this was taking place, we were really in a transition period. You know, we had really lost the timber industry at that point, and we were really trying to figure out where we went as a community. There's a lot of things in here that are still issues for us today. Um, it talks about law enforcement, it talks about business development, talks about um the, the business park, the industrial park, going to a business park, trying to attract different types of businesses, you know, take it going away from industry. Um, you know, looking more at recreation, the RV park and campground was a big one that was in here. So there's a lot that we have been working on for years that is a direct reflection of the vision that um, you know, that, that was set by this document and that process.
Okay.
I, I agree with the staff on that one. I think this should be condensed and brought back, and that way we can kind of get to where we can bring it back to the community again and show them what we've done and what we can do in the future.
And one of the things that's been really helpful for me, I didn't know that this actually even existed. Um, we just found this not too long ago, but, you know, just seeing the projects that are coming to fruition now, it's nice to see that these, these, you know, these aren't my ideas. These were ideas from the community years ago in nineteen ninety-seven. It's just that they're starting to, you know, take shape now or be implemented. So, you know, these are decades-long processes that have gone through a lot of different councils, a lot of different commissions, a lot of different managers and staff. Uh, but we are starting to see some of them actually um happen now. So um as, as staff, it, you know, it's a bit of a comfort to have this document as well to say, you know, because there's, there's always, you know, there's some people in the community that, you know, we hear this commentary that these, you know, these are all Mandy's ideas, that Mandy, you know, these, these aren't all my ideas, you know, this, this document clearly shows that that vision was started years ago. Uh, we are just at a point in time where we're actually being able to implement some of those strategies and visions, so. Um, so that's, I think that's been really helpful uh for staff to be able to have that as well.
Well, at the time, we knew that we wanted an RV park, but in nineteen ninety-seven, we still had Blue Lake Power. They might have been called Ultra Power still back then, operating as a cogeneration plant. So that, what we were looking at when we were talking about the Water Tower, Buckley Road, or all these other items, was where could we get a RV park? And so that, you know, that there changed considerably. Well, I'm glad you resurrected this.
Yeah, this is a great document.
Yeah, I, you know, I think there was a lot of work that was put into this, you know, a lot of people participated. Like I said, it was a real, it was a real kind of scary time for a lot of people in Blue Lake. You know, I'm a, I'm a timber kid, you know, I remember what it was like to, you know, have my friends moving away and their dads losing their jobs and, you know, not really knowing if my dad was gonna have a job or how this, you know, what this community really shook out to. So there was a lot of thought that um was put into this, you know, to, to think about stabilizing the future of Blue Lake. So I think it's really important.
Yeah, back then, we were more concerned about jobs than we were now with the low-income housing needs. Um, I think is a priority, but um back then, there was uh there was a concern that there were no jobs.
Housing was also identified, though, as a big need as well.
Well, yeah.
It was. There was things talking about houses on large lots and making them, breaking them down into smaller lots and all kinds of different things.
Bait and tackle store.
Mm-hmm. We've talked about that one for a long time.
That's been going on.
Beer garden by the river.
Yeah.
That's kind of happened.
See, we checked that off the list.
I saw that too. I was like, I'm not sure why.
Uh, the, the green, the green area over, it's not completely blocked off, but there's a green area over by um Delarte now.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
They're talking about blocking off H Street all the way, but.
Well, yeah, at the time, we didn't think we would ever be able to have a town square. That property was just not gonna happen, you know, and that's been a really big boom too, so.
There's some things.
That's a lot of progress.
I think we need a condensation of this and also something that we could hold that's all the stuff has been completed and where we're going with it, that we can give to the public and actually show like, look, we actually doing some stuff.
Yeah, yeah, I'd be happy to go through it, and like I said, staff can go through and um kind of update these projects. We can, you know, remove items that, you know, are not on the radar, that never came to fruition, that we, you know, there isn't an interest or a reasonableness to. I think that's a pretty straightforward word. Um, and yeah, I think then it's something, it's a document that, you know, has some longevity, continued longevity as we keep updating it or modifying it or changing it, so. I, but it's a, it's a really good, it's a good base. Um, like, a lot of work was done, and it's got a lot of value.
Also, I mean.
Leaks, that's important.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Putting our, the steps in to continue some of these projects, like what's our next step? For some that maybe have stalled out or some that need more decision-making that needs to come back to us and we can figure it out.
Yes, and prioritization.
So the next, well, it's, it could take weeks or months to work on this, right? Um, and I guess the next decision would be how, how we want to present it, and do we want to have like a town hall meeting rather than a council meeting um and invite people to talk about it? That seems like that might be.
Once it gets brought back in its whittled-down version.
Yeah, I think after, if we, if we can get that done by January, the condensed version.
January's next, next week.
February. Might just take a little bit more time.
Yeah.
These meetings are so close together now.
Well, our next one is not till the twentieth of January, but I would think staff would need a little more time to go through it and condense it. But anyway, I think it is important to see, like, like our manager said, what's been accomplished, Chris has said too, and then, you know, and then moving forward.
Some votes from the public on what we should prioritize next in this in this document.
Right, and that's gonna take a good amount of engagement and um, you know, and an outreach to, to get people to come to the town hall and participate in that. Awesome.
All right, so any other comments from council before opening up to public?
Do we want to make, did we make a decision on this already?
We'll wait for public comment.
Oh, I don't.
Yeah.
You can make a motion first. But you could just direct staff on it.
Yeah, it's just gonna be a direction, but it would be, yeah.
So direct the staff.
Yeah, the only thing that I would say in directing staff to provide an update, I mean, one of the hard, I mean, I think, and I think we've already addressed it, but just I want to make sure it's said that, you know, removing any notion of, you know, bombarding the public with private land ownership is.
notion of, you know, bombarding the public with private land ownership is, is, is kind of a no brainer on, on my end, just. And we would have no interest in attracting people to the water tank.
We were desperate back then, in my defense, that we were just looking anywhere we could find. Well, yeah, because like I said, that Blue Lake Power was not a possibility at all because they were operating, so there was there was a scramble of where can we have this happening? The town square property wasn't a possibility, there was no possibility, so then we started looking at private ownership. Um, okay, I think I'll go ahead and open up, um, I see some hands and so let's start with uh, the public comment portion here. Dennis Whitcomb, would you like to comment on uh, this agenda item concerning our vision re-
Yes, I'd like to thank those wonderful people that put this product together, I haven't heard of it either. And I think it deserves a special place in the city historical archive. And it looks like we did uh, see a lot of progress recently towards uh, some of these ideas. And I think that's a, a good uh, template for the future. Maybe the city commissions can get involved in it later down the road. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Julie?
Yes, I hope you guys can hear me still well.
Yes.
Understand, yes, understanding this was an extension grant from USDA originally um, twenty plus years ago, and at that time, they were saying there was potentially seventy new members that were spread out in these envisioning meetings, and that could be potentially recounts per se. I love that they had multiple meetings, um. I, however, support revising our outdated materials. I feel like we need to focus on the important revisings that we really need done. Our general plan is the main one, which has all these elements in it. I don't know why we're paying attention to this grant for the USDA that had an envisioning plan. I think it's important to incorporate it back because they noted within it, they used our general plan to incorporate these ideologies into this, this, you know, presentation they gave back to the city. So we need to get back to our general plan and that's gonna allow the housing element. It's gonna allow the ozone and before we even do any of that, we really should focus on our sewer treatment plant and the infrastructure of our roads that aren't just like glamorous one ways to the other way. We need to get these things done first, I really feel like, and so let's focus on our general plan, all the ideology that were mentioned this evening are all in there. And we should prioritize in community meetings to start breaking that down into what we feel is gonna be the next twenty, forty years, like they did. And I feel like waiting and procrastinating is opening the city in for a lot of issues, trying to incorporate housing element that is not consistent with our general plan. So I love the theory of getting back what this community wants and needs, but let's put our efforts back to what we need to get done. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie. Any other public comment? Erin and then Kent?
Yeah, it's gonna be redundant here because I haven't done what you all said about this, but I want to thank you again for calling me and talking to me about this and being reasonable and, and I don't know really where everybody stands on, you know, property rights and how devastating it is to people to have their land taken and people walk all over it. This co- me seeing this um, caused me to have several meetings with Peter Busman, several um, meetings with attorneys, talking to all of you and um, this is, this is important. I talked to Billy Hansel because the Humboldt County Sheriff's Department's been very instrumental in helping me to keep people off my land. So, thank you for understanding that and um, taking that under consideration. And I hope in the future you take under consideration before you put somebody's land on here, that it is their own private property and it could make someone very upset. Thank you.
Thanks, Erin. And Kent Swatsky.
And we have Lisa up there.
And Lisa Hoover after Kent.
Kent Swatsky, um, one of the things, projects in here, which may still be doable, uh, is, is here in this one page. It's upriver to Swayze Dam Short River Trails. And it appears here that this is uh, going through Forest Service land and Simpson land. So if you're gonna concentrate on trails, that might be an appropriate way to see if you can do a deal with Simpson. I, I work quite closely with Supervisor Steve Madrone, he's a, he's a peacemaker, he does trails, he does all kinds of things like that. So you may even wish to reach out to Steve, who was a major participant in Blue Lake at one time, his heart still seems to be here with us. And it takes a person who has that nature to do a deal rather than being pushy, abrasive and try and force your way into things, so that, that's an important thing to see. Uh, this thing just apparently, apparently just died in ninety seven, I mean, I see no indications that it moved any further, nobody ever contacted me at the Emporium regarding these particular things. Although I did have those particular things in there for quite a while, artists and all kinds of things going on in the building. Um, I do support you uh, going forward and trying to find a few gems out of this. Just so you know, the supervisors seem to be concentrating a lot of their time and effort and money in, in a I don't know whether it will be stealing from you, but there's plenty of room for everybody, but developing trails for the bikes and everybody in the McKay Tract. Uh, that's a county owned uh, forest land. And uh, today, that was at a supervisor's meeting where they were going on, they're gonna be spending quite a bit on that because they did feel it. It's a great thing for the community, it's a great thing to get things, and a lot of people are doing this, so I strongly support, uh, supporting this, you know, our Simpson thing out there. Um, and then maybe you want to get together with the county and uh, people can come and spend one day uh, K track or a half day there and then come out to here, so partnerships with the county and things to promote this. The other thing that was put out today was the money being spent from TOT money, which we have to a little bit of, maybe in the future we'll have more, but to promote these things, that's what they're using the TOT money for, is to advertise things for the businesses like your bike parks, your, your bike things and your, your facilities out there, so. Um, I strongly suggest you get a working relationship, uh, especially with Supervisor Steve Madrone and see what you can work out to partner up with the county on these things.
Thank you. Lisa Hoover on Zoom?
Hello, um, yes, I just, um, hope Kelly can hear me okay, I couldn't hear y'all as well, but um, I want to um, support what Julie Christie was saying, because it sort of resonated with some of my thoughts about the general plan being put on the front burner and I know it's got an ex- cost to it, but it is the overarching document that this type of thing would fit within, um, or should fit within, so I want to support the general plan. And also the community engagement, when this was done in nineteen ninety seven, there were three meetings held. And um, and some of the things have to do with um, improve on what we have, um, open space, no building over two stories. Maybe um, instead of just having the staff look at this as a component and maybe as, as something that can be looked at by, under the general plan. I would, as I often do, ask for public engagement and community input on some of these, because again, three meetings were held in nineteen ninety seven. But my emphasis is on getting a general plan that includes elements of this that can be supported by our general plan as the underwriting document, so thank you.
Thanks, Lisa.
So, I kind of want to agree with some of what folks were saying. Um, one of the things that was crossing my mind, we were talking about staff, um, working on this document is, is just a priority um, issue and, and how many hours that's gonna take. Um, so I think that's the something we, you know, I mean, this is certainly a, looking at something like this and, and kind of our forward thinking and our planning um, is part of, of what we're doing, um. But I think also it's important to try to, try to um, weave that into everything else that's being done and not, you know, and not leave some of those other pieces behind. You know, by spending time on this document, if, if it's not gonna lead us where we need to go. If that makes sense, I mean, you know, if we're all really committed to some community visioning and, and meetings and town hall, then I think it's great that we go forward with it.
Yes.
Um, but I'm, I'm a little afraid that so many other projects that are being worked on already are, are um, are already kind of behind a little bit maybe, I mean, I don't know, we hear that staff, it doesn't have enough time to do everything they need to get done. So I'm a, a little bit afraid to put something else on your plate.
Well, I think staff has indicated that you could have some work done on this and it wouldn't, wouldn't be unreasonable for you to take.
I honestly think it would be unreasonable not to work on this. Um, I think this is a really critical document, I think it's um, a real guiding document and I think it's something that's um, you know, there's a lot of progress that's been made in a lot of, and a lot of these categories. And so I think it's important because I think it's um, I think it's part of it's the longevity of the vision and I think if we don't update this document and we don't keep it moving forward and we don't use it as the foundation for decision making, then I think we're, I think we run a risk of uh, you know, kind of losing sight or, or getting off track. So I think uh, one of the things, I know Gary and I had talked a lot about this, um, you know, this these categories, these ideas are, are very much reflective of, you know, our activities that we're working on currently and it, it is guiding staff. Um, even though we didn't necessarily know that this document, I think Gary knew that it existed somewhere. Um, but like I said, it's, it's a pretty, it's a pretty um, comprehensive approach to development in the community. And I, as a staff member, really like having more of that guidance versus, you know, having something things come out at, you know, a town hall or, you know, I think this is a more um, stratified document for us to use to guide us through, I guess.
And it can be used in conjunction with the general plan?
Absolutely, it's directly reflective of the general plan.
I also think it's gonna ease a lot of people's minds, once we do condense this and bring it back to the public and have a town hall meeting about all the things that we've done and what we're gonna continue doing. You know, then it gives them an option to either be involved and comment on what we've done and what we're doing and you know, maybe they, we need another town hall meeting for a specific item on that and someone can suggest that. But we, this, this document is awesome, from where it came from and to see it come to fruition, I think, needs to be done.
Does staff feel they have enough guidance from council to move forward on how we want to condense this? I mean, there's some specifics we've talked about throwing out completely and then.
Maybe I'll just reiterating back to you kind of what my um, what my thought was, like I said, just to kind of update, these provide, you know, um, and I think putting it into table is really easy to work with too, so that we can track it. Um, and I can have specific categories of, you know, if an item has been completed or has been modified or if it's, you know, it's no longer relevant, uh, you know, so that we can kind of see. And I think it'll be an interesting process too, you know, like I said, for staff, you know, these are a lot of what we're working on today started in nineteen ninety seven, so uh, you know, to show that consistency and progress and consistency of thought and vision um, is, I think it just shows that Blue Lake has, has really worked hard, you know, to continue to keep um, working towards economic, you know, revitalization and recreation industry and investment, um, so like I said, I know for me, it provides um, it provides some cover for, you know, some of the activities that we're working on, that it's not just, it's not just staff taking this and running with something that, you know, it's, it's really, it really, there is consistency there in the thought, so.
I think you can use the same four themes, it looks like, you know, be.
I really like some closure on some of the items.
Yeah, exactly.
If there is any history or documentation of why it stopped doing what it was doing or that kind of thing, like if it just petered out because there was lack of interest or funding, what can we do about that? Or if it just became something like, no, we can't do this type of thing.
Okay, all right, so that's the direction from council to staff and we anticipate it will take you at least two months to wade through that. Give us a final report, sounds good. All right, we're moving on now to item nine, Humboldt County Sheriff Law Enforcement Contract Update.
I'm not a council member.
Okay, you're not a council member, no, you're a member.
Yeah.
So at the request.
I read it as a memer.
We have those. At the request of Humboldt County Sheriff, the city is in the process of setting up a meeting to discuss contracting options and opportunities, it is anticipated that a meeting will take place in mid-January. The city has appointed the city manager, Mayor Jones, council member Elizabeth McKay to the negotiating team for the city.
Yeah, so just a quick update, we're just waiting to set the meeting, um. I've, and you know, there's definitely some conversations still taking place um, amongst uh, the cities and uh, the county and the sheriff's office, so. Um, it's an on, kind of an ongoing fluid uh, situation, um, and I anticipate after the first of the year, we'll um, be looking at scheduling a meeting.
And there has been a comment um, by Becky Thornton that I think uh, we all received at our places here and I will go ahead and read that at this point and then open it up to public comment. Um, she writes, hello, I'm wanting this comment to be read into record at the council meeting related to item number seven, sheriff contract. Police service is based on population, not call volume, this has been stated several times. So any negotiations would raise anyway once you increase the city's population with more housing, that means more people, more money to pay out. So as you go into this conversation with the sheriff, sheriff next month, please remember that and keep it in mind. Thank you, Rebecca L. Thornton Regosa. And I don't think that's concerning that item. Um, all right, are there any questions or comments from council?
Um, I'm curious as to whether or not um, supervisors Wilson and Madrone are gonna be part of these meetings or the meeting, let's start with one.
We had requested that, I think at least Mike Wilson should be there since he is our supervisor.
Yeah, and we had um, specified that and the sheriff came back and stated that they would not be meeting um, with the city in partnership with Trinidad or any representatives of the county. And I think that's something that the um, the city's negotiating party needs to push back on and um, and have a subsequent uh, response to that.
And I recall the letter from the sheriff last month said that he was open to meeting within thirty days, so next month's gonna be outside of that, is that?
That was at his request, Ryan Quinnell got ahold of us to try and set up a meeting.
That was sent to the negotiating team. Okay, any other further questions or comments? All right, uh, public comment on this item? Julie and then Kent?
Yes, thank you, I appreciate the ongoing conversation, I think it helps with transparency for the community and opportunity to speak about their concerns. Um, and I would also like to thank our mayor for reading in two minutes the written response. Um, at last night's planning commission, they stated they will not be reading into public comment, statements. So it'd be nice to perhaps have the um, council advise staff that those then written statements that the planning commission is no longer going to read in the packets, that'd be great. Just like the beginning, just more transparency for the public and that availability to go back and, and look at these statements from either staff participants and public, thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Kent Swatsky?
Some of you are painfully aware, I spend quite a bit of time, which I did today in the supervisor chambers. I had, wasn't able to speak with uh, Sheriff Hansel, uh, but I did have some communication with him, uh, one of the people uh, reached out to me and so I followed up with it. Uh, somebody reached out to me, hi Kent, curious if you heard any updates on nu- on how negotiations are going? Uh, somebody reached out to me, hi Kent, curious if you heard any updates on new, on how negotiations are going with the sheriff department? If they even happen. Hoping to zoom in the meeting tonight, then I won't make who this was, but this came in to me. Uh, I was in supervisor's meeting, but when I got home, this came in at ten, twelve AM. So I've been ahead and forwarded that to uh to Sheriff Hansel at um four oh one PM this afternoon. And my request was please report out so that we can report out tonight. And at four thirty PM, I had an email from the sheriff. He's very good at getting back to people. I found, uh, good afternoon Kent, sorry, I didn't connect with you today, busy with CCW stuff on the state level. Rob Bonta is changing the rules on us. Mandy did reach back out to us regarding a meeting. We are working on a date in early January for that meeting to discuss the current MOU and potential changes. We will also be going over the cost breakdown for Blue Lake so they understand why we have to charge for law enforcement services. So that's the communication that I have. And again, I I, you know, I've strongly applaud any of you taking your time to reach out to the people that are important to us. Uh, I think that's always good to have communication. And then you can have your own understanding as far as what the process is going. And I think that's beneficial for for all of us to understand both the public and you folks. So any of you who do take the time to reach out directly to people involved? That's that uh thing that I think is beneficial for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, we will move on then to item ten, council correspondence. Uh, we received correspondence from Kent Sawatsky um concerning the planning commission meeting. Last night at the planning commission meeting, the city manager Amanda Mager again asserted that there are many potential commercial renters for locations in downtown Blue Lake. When questioned regarding most potential locations, she had a common answer for that. There were owner slash landlord problems that precluded the properties from being rented. Regarding residential rentals, we used to get call, phone calls from potential tenants referred to us by the city staff. We no longer get those calls. Does the city still maintain a list of potential residential landlords? When potential tenants contact the city, does the city maintain lists of potential commercial landlords or potential tenants? Common sense would dictate that an honest attempt to rent commercial property in Blue Lake would include bringing potential landlords and potential tenants together. We as landlords of the Emporium Building have not had any of the many potential renters contact us in recent years. We have the ability to rent multiple size sections of the Emporium Building. Common sense would dictate that contact information of potential tenants and potential landlords would be maintained by Blue Lake City Staff. This is a formal request for two lists maintained by the city of Blue Lake staff. Number one, all vacant, commercial vacant properties in Blue Lake, including contact information. Two, all potential renters within the last two years who have approached the city inquiring about renting commercial properties in Blue Lake, including contact information. Thank you for posting the Arts and Heritage Commission meeting, council of late cancellation again. Please provide this communication to the Blue Lake City Council at tonight's meeting. Is there any other council correspondence?
Yeah, there's a whole other page.
Oh, sorry. Uh, notice of cancellations. Uh, this is from Kent Sawatsky, Annalee. I got ready for the Parks and Rec Commission meeting last Wednesday. I checked the webpage on my way out the door. There was no notification that I saw. Did you post notifications there? Someone said it was on Facebook. Was that true? Facebook is not the legal method of communication that is required for public notification. The webpage is. I was down there with one of the commission members when she found out about the cancellation. I find it hard to believe that someone got a strep throat diagnosis that late in the day. You have my email and my two phone numbers. This is a formal request that you post cancellation of any commission or council meeting on your webpage immediately upon a known cancellation and contact me. Please acknowledge receipt of this communication and forward it to all appropriate staff. Again, uh, from Kent Sawatsky to Annalee Gonzalez, good morning, Annalee. I do not see an agenda or packet for the Economic Development Commission December twelfth, four thirty PM meeting. This was required to be posted seventy-two hours in advance of the meeting scheduled for December twelfth. Has the meeting been canceled? Is this true? And if true, why has this change not been posted both after three locations and on the official city webpage page as required? My understanding is that the regularly scheduled Blue Lake City Council meeting for December twenty-sixth at six thirty PM has been rescheduled to December nineteenth. Is this true? If so, has this been posted at our three posting locations and on the city's official webpage as required? Citizens plan their schedules around their desire to attend these important meetings. When the city manager Amanda Mager claims the city has enabled encouraged public participation in city business, it is not true. The sloppy disrespect for required timely notification blocks our ability to participate. This justifiably leads one to conclude that participation is not desired and her statement is incorrect. Please acknowledge receipt of the communication, forward it to appropriate city staff and have it read into the record at the next Blue Lake City Council meeting as correspondence. Please include the December eighth communication below also as correspondence to the Blue Lake City Council. I said that is in the wrong order. Okay. Um, any other correspondence? Okay. All right, we're moving on to consent agenda nine eleven. Um, and I do want to pull the minutes because I have a couple of issues with that. So um is there anyone else that would like to pull anything from the consent agenda? Can we approve item eleven B?
Some of.
Second. Motion by Angela Scholl, second by Elizabeth McKay to approve the warrants and disbursements, eleven B. Any further discussion from council? Anything from public? Back to council for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Okay, now on uh item eleven A. There are just a couple of little things. Um, page four. So motions, you know, and seconds and votes are really important. So at the bottom of page four, motion was made by Elizabeth Kay, second by Elise Giffani. Then, when the ayes were mentioned, there was no mention of, it said Adeline Jones, Angela Scholl, Elise Giffani. Elizabeth McKay should be added there. And a similar thing happened on page six. And that's about in the middle of the page. Motion to appoint Annalee Gonzalez to the position of city clerk and Amanda Mager to the position of interim deputy city clerk. Council member McKay, second by council member Scholl. Again, in the ayes, it was noted Jones and Giffani. So you need to add Scholl and McKay. So those are the only two I have. Okay.
I have something on page six. About four inches down, it says council member Giffani. Regardless of skill set, it's still an issue of personality. I'd like that to be stricken from this record as I did not say anything to that effect. I reviewed the video as this meeting happened two months ago. I did review the video. Or was it three months ago? Yeah. Um, and so um I couldn't find any statement that I made that sounded anything like that.
Well, as I've said, you know, my concern is motions, seconds and and votes, that's really what's important. But the level of detail.
Important, but I think it's also important that people aren't misquoted.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Any other changes or additions or corrections to the minutes of September?
Um, I do have another change and that's um on um page seven. On um about, again, four to five inches down, uh inquiries, inquiries about uh the RV project will be generating in profits, what the RV project will be generating in profits. And um, I'd like that to be not profits, but income to the city. And then further down almost to the bottom of the page, states she would like to know the potential income from the RV project. Again, that's to the city and um.
Is that under you?
It is.
Oh, potential income. So you want to have that say?
To the city.
Income, oh, leave income.
Yeah.
To the city.
I'm gonna have to have, probably have our attorney give us some clarification because you know, we're trying to capture as much as we can. But to come back and restructure statements, I don't know that I, I'm gonna need some clarification. Because this seems, this kind of happens in all the minutes and it's, we don't take, you know, minutes verbatim. We're trying to capture uh, you know, the essence of what's being said as much as we can. And so I don't know that going back through and restructuring those statements is, we're just, I think we're gonna need some clarification on how to move forward with that.
So are you saying you're not able to make these changes tonight?
I'm gonna, we're gonna go ahead and make these changes, but I'm gonna ask for clarification from the attorney on how we handle this.
Okay.
So you can make the changes that I've indicated with the
Yeah.
motions, because I think those are important for the record. So we can approve the minutes with the corrections to the motions?
Where was all the corrections?
Did you have others?
I'm just double checking.
Okay.
I'm good.
Good thought.
I'm fine.
I motioned that we approved the minutes as corrected.
Second. Motion made by Chris Edgar, second by Elizabeth Kay. Any further discussion from council? Discussion from public? Kent Sawatsky.
It's very distressing here that you do not have, apparently don't have a actual record of recording, an official record recording rather than the one we have here, which has been deemed not to be official as far as I can tell. Where staff is capable of going back and checking to see whether people are being quoted right. Uh, the record is to reflect exactly what somebody said. If you're gonna quote them at all, either either just don't bother quoting any of you people for what you said or quote them accurately. And uh, if your administrative record is incorrect, I believe your attorney most likely will encourage you to make it be correct or cease to have it being so totally common with everybody you're making and that would be your decision. But if it's put out there, it has to be accurate or not put out there at all. And uh, I'm not, I'm not your attorney, but it'll be interesting for us to hear and I would request that you get communication back from the attorney regarding determination that your city manager requested made. So that's important to all of us. Um, very interesting to see what.
Thank you. There was a motion, a second on the floor. If there's no further discussion, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes.
Who put the second on that?
Don't wanna leave it out?
I'm just wondering, um, it's my assumption that um typically in the past, uh, we would be we, minutes would be presented the next month for the previous meeting. Um, and it looks like we're about three months behind right now, two to three months behind, and we have been for quite a, quite a while. So I'm wondering if there's any chance that we might be able to catch up so that we're not having to remember meetings that happened three months ago. We're, we're just working on something that happened a few weeks ago. So I guess that's a question for Annalee and
Yeah.
Do you need any support from us to be able to get that done?
We should have. We will be out today anyway.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, reports of council and staff. Uh, we'll just go around the room. I don't know if anybody's been to any meetings, but start with Chris.
I had a report, but I forgot it. So I went to the safety meeting, but I forgot my notes. I had to leave early because I needed to go to work at like a one o'clock in the morning. So I'm sorry, I didn't have anything to report from my partial meeting that I attended.
And Elise.
I don't think I've been to a meeting since our last meeting. Well, yeah, Parks and Rec got canceled and uh and it's all a little bit of a blur. Um. I go to the RCEA meetings every month, but.
You might not have one in December. A lot of meetings.
We have one, we have one this week. Yeah.
Oh, okay. So you'll give us a report?
Oh, I should have something for you. I had a chat with Andy, the the web designer the other day. He's still working on stuff. Figuring out some things, fixing some things, reconfiguring some things. Um, we found a little problem and fixed that and uh, anyway, nothing too exciting going on there. But still interested in input from anybody that's working on the website, using the website. Um, anything you think may not be working properly. We are.
There was something about, when I was trying to look up one thing, it was another, like Arts and Heritage showed up or all the, yeah, things were under a label. Arts and Heritage was a label for something that was not Arts and Heritage? Did you? I think I brought it up. I think Annalee was able to fix that. I think it was Parks, maybe it was labeled as Arts and Heritage or something.
Yeah, there was something, yeah, I was looking up something and it said it was the Arts and, I'm like, that's not the Arts and Heritage Commission, because I know it. Yeah.
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 Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Yeah, sometimes the things that aren't right are something that's done by Andy in coding. Or he didn't unders, fully understand something that he was moving around and um, and put it in the wrong place or whatever. Um, so occasionally there's been some stuff like that, but he's mostly done moving stuff around. Um, and we did make a decision to change the way that the minutes in it, um, that the minutes and and uh agendas and packets were archived. So if you go in there and you look at the different commissions, you'll find that um, that each commission is gonna have their own archive page. Their, um, their stuff's gonna be archived on the bottom of their page and then the, the agendas and minutes page, um, which previously had everybody is just gonna have the council. But it's gonna be a month or so before all of that stuff is all populated correctly and split up.
That's great.
So.
We're still missing one, council members.
Oh, you're gonna, you're gonna be up against a wall in a few minutes, I think, just telling.
Yeah, I could take your picture tonight. Um, okay, so.
Can you do what I was cleaning?
Oh.
Cause it's not everybody's.
Um, so the Humboldt Waste Management Authority does not meet in December. Their meeting would have been last Thursday, the fourteenth. Um, this Thursday, we're having a short Humboldt County Association of Governments meeting at four thirty. Then at five thirty, we're having a uh retirement party for Debbie Egger, who's been working for um HCOG for thirty years, I think, um, long time. And then I just wanted to report that on um Saturday, December ninth, we had a lovely little parade through town at four o'clock. Uh, that started at the Mad River Brewery, went through town, fire department was involved. And then we went to the town square and had a tree lighting um event and children went around and hung ornaments. It was really delightful. The weather was wonderful. And then afterwards, there was a nice dinner at Crash Hall um catered by Haywan Burritos, but it was a pasta dinner, not burritos. And then the Winter Wonderland happened last Saturday, December sixteenth. Lots of good feedback from that and pictures and thank you for everyone that's involved in that as well. Very nice um event. And then this Friday, I guess on the twenty-second, there will be a caroling party at the Presbyterian Church led by Jackie Dandino. Um, so, yeah, I know, I don't have the time.
Five thirty or six?
I can look it up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On Friday.
Yes.
Yeah, it's Friday, the twenty-second. And that's all I have.
We had relatives in town for the uh, the, this is the December ninth day and it was, they were, they were really um enamored how cool the parade was and the tree lighting and the dinner and it was like this little bit of pride, it was really cool.
Yeah.
Um, so REDAC does not have a meeting in December. Uh, the executive director was on vacation.
Uh, the executive director was on vacation, so good for him. Uh, but last, uh, last Monday, the Chamber of Commerce met, um, under the helm of the new chamber president. And Emily Wood and, um, a couple of things were discussed, uh. One is that there is a hope in, uh, well, there's a, an initial planning process for February for, um. Kind of a Taste of Blue Lake event. It kinda started with the idea of doing, doing, um. You know, having people walk around to different businesses and do tastings and, and events that way, but then as the planning process kinda drug on. And we were looking into, uh, February for it and understanding air intermittent weather. Seemed like a better idea to do kind of a Taste of Blue Lake at Prash Hall and invite. Um, you know, our local, our local food, foodie folks to, um. To come and, 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 uh, distribute and show off all their goodies. So that is something that, um, Emily is, Emily and the, and the rest of the chamber are working on. Um, and then really beyond that, you know, Emily just kind of shared some ideas that she has for increasing, um. Not just, not just increasing membership, but increasing participation. In the chamber and in activities and we talked a little bit about, you know, again, kind of a second conversation about what that would look like. And how to attract the non-brick and mortar businesses to really participate in the chamber. And then last but not least, Justin, ever so graciously. Sort of volun- was voluntold, um, when he, when he, um, submitted an application to be a, a board member. Uh, his business to be, for him to be a board member on the chamber, um, he also is now, uh, our secretary. So we have a full-fledged secretary, a full-fledged president, and I think there's still talk about looking for a VP, so. Um, to sign that. Oh, he wasn't right, that's right, I forgot, it was, um, yeah, our, our friend from Green Diamond, that's right. Jeff from Green Diamond, I totally spaced that, yeah, so we, there's a full sitting. Chamber of Commerce. It's still Rick. Yeah, and, um. Levin, right? Um, and so Rick is still there and Rick, Rick agreed to stay on because there's so much, Rick and then Karen Miller. Decide, you know, agree to stay on for a little while longer while there's this transition of, uh, a lot of new folks, so. Kinda keep the, keep the consistency, so.
Good, so both of mine were canceled. And, uh, staff report, we have a manager's report here that was included in our packet and if. Mandy wants to go ahead and summarize it, I sort of underlined some things that I was interested in, but. A commercial kitchen development. Um, the kitchen has been completed and I did hear that Hey Wong Burritos was very thrilled with the kitchen. When we had the Prash Hall dinner, um, the other night on December ninth, they. Just really loved it and it worked really well for them. Um, and you've noted that we've had numerous calls to inquire into the rental opportunities of that kitchen, so that's fairly good news, exactly what we wanted to have happen.
Yeah, and it's, um, it's pretty exciting cuz the, you know, the guys from Hey Wong's are, are Blue Lakers, they live here in Blue Lake and. Um, they just have great energy and they're, um, you know, they love Blue Lake and they really see, um, the potential, so. They've actually, we've been actually in talks about, um, working, like maybe contracting with them to run our concessions. Uh, for Friday and Saturday skate night as well, um, so that we would have more of a restaurant type atmosphere that could not only cater to. Um, the people coming in for skating, but also could be kind of a takeout restaurant, or if people just wanted to bring their kids or families there. Um, you know, we can set up the, the party rooms, uh, really. Uh, morphed into more of, you know, it's, uh, an arcade, we have, um. I think we're up to ten arcade games now and then air hockey, so. Um, that's pretty exciting, we have different seating, we have our, um, our print press business in there and so. Just, it's a real multi, um, faceted, um. Location for a whole, that can support a lot of different things, so. We've talked about them, you know, even being able to do some takeout dinners, you know, maybe like platters of enchiladas or family dinners, so. Cuz I know like, um, you know, as a single mom, like, you know, getting home from baseball, you know, late and thinking about having to do dinner. Or, you know, just on the weekends, you know, just being able, you know, I hit up like pizza a lot. I probably keep Darcy in business, um. And, you know, just being able to have that other opportunity, you know, to have additional meals in the community, I think it'd be great, um. We've also been renting the kitchen to, um. Natalia, um, Boyce, which is really exciting and she loves the kitchen as well, so she's right now renting it just for her catering jobs. Cuz she's pretty, um, booked up for all the holiday events, which is great, um, but she's also looking at some. Longer term options and things to be able to use that facility, so, um, lots of, lots of interest and enthusiasm for it. Um, then obviously, it's just, you know, it's got so many different usage opportunities, um, just kind of across the board. When it comes to even emergency services, sheltering, um. It just really opens a lot of doors and increases our capacity, so.
Great, that's wonderful news. And then concerning the EDA grant, it sounds like you've received an extension to complete the master plan and surveying work on the city parcels. In the Powers Creek District.
Yeah, so we just had a kickoff meeting with Storyland last week as well to kinda, um. Be able to kinda synthesize development options for those, you know, kind of outlier parcels, um, that haven't really been. Uh, kinda spoken for, looked at with, um, serious interest, so. Um, that's an exciting project cuz that's gonna also allow us to subdivide the parcels, um, and it'll allow us to. Um, subdivide those parcels with the, um, intention of creating. Kind of the, the highest and best use opportunity for those parcels, so looking at size, looking at the types of businesses that might come in. Um, looking at connectivity, um, ingress egress, just connecting all of the infrastructure, so. Um, in the end, you know, we should have a pretty nicely designed, um, district and be able to complete that. Um, subdivision, cuz right now we have, you know, a few big lots that we need to, you know, kinda carve up a little bit in no manner that makes sense. So it's nice that the EDA grant will be able to pay for that as well.
What is Storyland's role in that?
Storyland is gonna be looking at development potential, um, based upon the analysis that they've been doing. With looking at, uh, recreation, the RV park and campground, um, they did a lot of, um. Work in looking at other types of support businesses that could come in, um, and then looking at different business types and what types of. Um, capacity they would need for development sizes and then that will then kinda drill down into lot sizes, um, for recommendation.
And then this, oh.
I just wonder if, um, if you might invite Cash, um, to take part in some of those conversations.
Cash is already part of this process.
Did he meet with Storyland as well?
Uh, we've been in conversation, so his, they've been sharing drawings back and forth and then they'll be brought in, uh, the Danco project, the bike park. The roots, all of those projects will be brought in to look at how they all connect.
Estate park per capita grant. Of a hundred and seventy seven thousand, the majority of the work has been. Completed, remaining work includes the installation of a new roof on Prash Hall. I'm concerned about the floor.
Yeah, so, um, the flooring company will be there the second week of January to redo the floor. So we've been testing out some new bonding agents, um, to be able to, to make that improvement, so.
What do they, what, what did they use in the first place?
Well, they tested it. No, it's, it was a, um, it was a specific product that was, is. Is for this type of application, but I think what happened, that, that flooring had multiple layers of paint. And so when they went, they tested on. Two layers of paint and the bonding worked and then. Through the process of sanding the floor and prepping it for painting, we reached a third layer and I think that third layer possibly was oil-based. And so then that, because it, it's bonding in some areas, it's bonding in the areas that didn't get sanded. Really far down, uh, but it's not bonding in the areas that we had to take it deeper, so. Uh, there were a lot of repairs that had to be made, you know, it's, it's, um. Plywood flooring, basically, so.
And it gets a lot of hard use, I mean, if you see those skaters.
Scratch and stuff and we knew, we have all the paint for the repairs, we just didn't know it was going to peel. Sections, and they didn't either, I mean, they've, they've been really great to work with and, I mean, it was a huge disappointment for everyone, you know, I mean, they were so proud of the project. And did a great job and then it just, we started having a chemical reaction.
Do they have to redo the entire thing?
I don't think they're gonna have to do, redo the entire thing, so we're gonna go in and see what sections, um. It's not happening everywhere, like I said, it's happening in those areas where we hit that third layer of paint that we didn't actually really know about.
So work on the roof will take place in the spring of twenty twenty four. You're closing out the state park per capita grant. Um, the town square grant, part construction will begin in the spring of twenty twenty four. Contracting with Sequoia Industries to complete that, and concerning parks and rec.
Is there any update on, um, reimbursement, uh, from the, uh? The grant for the town square for the purchase?
Uh, we are waiting on our reimbursement, it's been approved, we should be receiving it any day, they said it would take four to six weeks and that was probably at least four weeks ago. So that money should be coming in any day.
And are we expecting the state park per capita grant?
Um, yeah, so we put in for reimbursement, so they have to come out and do an inspection and so we're working with the, um, the grant administrator to schedule that.
So the bathroom came in above the project budget. So you've met with USDA Community Facility Representative and he has encouraged the city to submit another application through USDA. Okay, and then the ADA parking at the town square. That's been included, we do not currently have an ADA parking space in the downtown, this has been identified as necessary. So that will be worked on. And the bike park has started work on the dirt track portion of the bike park, work includes moving dirt. From two larger piles of the various feature locations and then utilizing small equipment and manpower to build. And compact the dirt, that's ongoing. City infrastructure, the library and project is ninety percent complete. What needs to really be done?
Uh, we have some cleanup work, we have some cleanup work with the, um, concrete and we have just our punch list and then, um, there's two, the. Doors to city hall have to be replaced as well.
Oh, so those, those south-facing doors are gonna be replaced, yay. Those have been a problem for years.
Kinda concreted in, so actually it worked out in our favor. They needed to be replaced anyway, so we're just waiting for those doors to come in and then actually I have a meeting with Dave Hoobin in the morning. And our, um, engineers to go through our punch list and there's just a lot of cleanup work with the concrete that needs to be addressed.
And I think the, um. The flower box needs to be moved back or something like that.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're, we're kind of looking at that whole area, um. We need to do some additional safety improvements in there as well, just to keep cars. Out and away from that area, cuz it gets a lot of people in that area and cars can cut that corner. Especially when we have other stuff going on and it pushes them over into that space, so, um, there's, I've got some real concerns with. That space and just making sure that we have some hard installations to make sure that people are safe right there.
Yeah, when those picnic benches were there for a while.
Yeah, no, right, yeah, they keep getting moved around and. People move them at night and then we come back and they're in the middle of the place, so yeah, it all has to be addressed.
Policy updates and studies. Request additional funds. Uh, for the project funded through the city's Community Development Block Grant. Um, the truck route study and design continues on the truck route project. You've been approved for funding, we've been approved by the CTC. One point six million to make much-needed safety improvements to Greenwood. Dan Burden, walkability, traffic safety guru, has completed a walkability audit of the city. And he's providing prelim- preliminary feedback on the truck route. And he has also been hired to work on our tailor weigh improvements, which is great. And that was through Humboldt County Association of Government money. The FEMA water tanks funding, the city submitted a funding request to FEMA Ha- Hazard Administration Program to replace the city's two Redwood. Water tanks. The city has received notice that the Phase One Award has been approved, this will fund, fund this design portion of the project. Working with FEMA. To finalize.
I mean, when was that, when, I mean, is this all, this is old news or this is something?
No, we just received approval in the last two weeks.
Oh, really?
And the housing element, we're waiting for the state. Any questions or comments? Okay, we're moving on to. Future agenda items for January twenty third, twenty twenty four.
A comment on item fifteen, uh, it's an item I used to think on.
Public comment.
Thank you, um. I brought it to your staff's attention, it's been brought to my attention by someone who's qualified to know. Uh, unless I've been misinformed. By you, you possibly have a misdesign on your ADA parking that you installed there. Back, I think about a year ago, there was a requirement, I've been told. That all ADA parking, and it totally makes sense to me. I reached out to Tom Mattson and I haven't heard back from him, uh, that I'm incorrect. But, uh, to facilitate ADA parking, they expect them people to, those people to also be able to charge their electric vehicles. That kinda makes sense and, uh, I, I was, uh, I was told that actually your staff was notified that. And it just, it just questioned a little bit, you know, when you have a, uh, an engineer you're paying top dollar for. And if I'm wrong, I will apologize for needing to be corrected. But to not have that i- in the plan and now you're probably gonna have to go back and jackhammer out and, uh, have additional. Monies for your project, which you may have to go after to be compliant with ADA and of course, this is a project, my understanding is for the county. The county was required to come into ADA compliance, they have a decree with the state. And so that will have to comply and Tom Mattson did say, yes, they were required to put those in. For some of their facilities, in some of the parking they did for ADA on their facility, so you may wish to follow up on that. And check with Mr. Mattson and see if you are required to do so and of course, you will be. If you're required to do so, you will do so, so I, I just, I just caution, uh, on that particular thing. And make sure you're always in compliance with ADA and, uh, that's something you have to do. Oh, I did, I did have another comment here. So I, I, I thought, when, when you've, when you are doing your, your design work for the water tank system. In reading comments there and I've heard different, different things. Mentioned to me and actually in the report from the application that had been made for this is that there is a tendency to require. Uh. Setback, safety setbacks from your water tank facilities. In other words, you have to have a hundred foot of defensible space. I highly recommend that you either get a waiver from that as far as your construction. Or else when you're designing things, go ahead and design it to allow for that process. Which again, would have to enable you when you're negotiating for space for Mr. Bessman. Or from Aaron Fur, you may wish to make sure you don't have to go back for renegotiations. Because of requirements you're required to have around your tank, so that's a concern, you never wanna have to go back and. Finish something and think and then, uh, off we go, thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Any other further? Public comment on item fifteen? All right, uh, item sixteen, future agenda items for January twenty third, twenty twenty four. We'll have the first reading of the ordinance for the leash law.
And hopefully a report from the first round of negotiations.
Yeah, we should be. We should have our meeting by then.
I believe, uh, we may have a presentation from RCEA. Um, regarding, um. Their potential, um, plans for. The, uh, power plant site.
RCEA's plans for the site?
They're, um, they're, uh, they'd like to make a presentation to the council to just talk about. Possibilities for that area. For power and battery storage.
Uh, okay, well, uh, there's no other. Information on that. Public, any public comment on that item? Julie?
Yes, thank you, I, I would like to suggest this agenda item in a way that it can be. Relayed out to perhaps some of the commissions, but. I would love to see some grassroots ways, I know we're already organizing a lot of events in town. But I just feel like we're gonna have to prioritize on. But I just feel like we're gonna have to prioritize on having kind of that turnkey. Um, come and go for the weekend revenues, just like we did the storytelling and the medieval festival, in any ways that we can kind of ear-tag those funds to come back into our general fund, and or in a way that they can be ear-tagged for other, um, specific, like, interests that those could be generated for, like, let's say we will have a fundraiser one weekend for the sheriffs, and that's ear-tagged, or future improvements on the bike park. That could be ear-tagged. I just would love to see some, um coming together with anything that we can to start generating funds outside of grants and outside of, um, county and state funding. I think the more that we do that as a community and just stash it away while we can, I think that's a great idea, any way we can monopolize on that, thank you.
Thank you. The Kent?
I would like to see something agendized regarding, uh, the possibility of a downtown, uh, redevelopment project or committee. If you're serious about developing your downtown, uh, I think a resource for that would be Cindy Trobitz-Thomas, because she ran that with the City of Eureka, and I benefited from working with her. Uh, these kind of districts enable you to find grants or things to enable us to go ahead and do the development you'd like us to do down there. So if you're serious about that, I think I'd like to have some kind of a, a presentation, if not at this meeting, and in a meeting in the near future to, uh, to let it, let, let you discuss what your options are to support our economic development downtown. Or let's just give up either way, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're moved on to item seventeen. I move to adjourn. Motion made by Elizabeth Kay, seconded by Chris Egger to adjourn, any further discussion from council? From public? Back to council for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.